Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the August 13, 2025?
Please don't rush this.
Regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brian, would you please do a roll call?
Sure. Kelly Kozak?
Here.
Kelly Mulvoy-Mangan?
Here.
Benjamin Blaustein?
Here.
Samantha Jaberger?
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan Jr.?
Jerome Valenti?
Gabrielle Elfen?
Here.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have an administrative matter to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the August 13, 2025, regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brian, would you please do a roll call?
Yes. Kelly Kozak?
Here.
Kelly Mulvoy-Mangan?
Here.
Benjamin Blaustein?
Here.
Samantha Jaberger?
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan Jr.?
Jerome Valenti?
Gabrielle Elfen?
Here.
And the fire exits are in the front and the back.
Thank you, Brian. In just a moment, we're going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing at the end as we have a moment of silence.
We tragically lost a recent graduate of our high school, Victoria DeLeo, and after the pledge, we'd just like to observe a moment of silence in her memory. My pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, is that considered two sets of minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, two sets of minutes from the July 8 meeting. One was the reorganization meeting, and the second was the regular business meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, you may do so by approaching the podium. Just please state your first and last name. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Delphine Penilla. I'm a trustee board member of the Harrison Educational Foundation, and I am very pleased to be here this evening to present a check to the Harrison Central School District on behalf of HEF. The foundation recently approved two grants, one for Molding for Design, proposed by John Burke from LMK Middle School, and Skate in School, proposed by Jay Soraco, Derek Fish, Louis Cale, Wendy Swenson, and John Eric Sapala at Harrison High School. The Molding for Design, as well as the Skate in School, both help guide students to appreciate and respect the ideas of others and develop effective collaboration and communication skills. These programs continue to incorporate character traits such as patience, focus, safety, and confidence, all of which correlate with the IB learner profile. It is Harrison Educational Foundation's pleasure to present you with this check for $5,615 to fund the Molding for Design and Skate in School grants presented to HEF. HEF is proud to offer our continued support for our schools, and we thank you, Dr. Wool, the Board of Education, and everyone in the Harrison Central School District who make it possible for our students to experience this level of excellence in their education. I thank you for your time.
Yay. We're going to have a picture with the board president, Delphine, if you don't mind coming up here.
I'll let him cry.
This is a happy moment.
Thanks so much. Have a great night. Appreciate it.
And to your entire board, we're very appreciative of all that HEF does.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to my update. People often think that the summer is quiet, but it is never quiet. It's when everything is happening behind the scenes. But as the community knows, there's a tremendous amount of work going on in all six of our buildings, thanks to the bond referendum, and we are in the works getting everything well underway. Some projects are moving along a bit faster than others, but we are getting there. So we thank you for your patience in advance. This is our last board meeting before the start of school, so before we know
Actually, it's not.
Oh, sorry. That's right.
We just added one.
We just added one. I'll give you the date at the end. That's right. Sorry. We have one in the morning to approve hires. But that being said, I also just wanted to acknowledge that during the summer, from the National Speech and Debate Association, members of our high school earned recognition through points and degrees in the NSDA Honor Society. And so each new degree represents hours of learning, practice, and improvement by our students, and thanks to the dedicated coaching. But the following degrees were earned at the high school during the month of July. Paige Bancini on Excellence, Jordan Blake, Excellence, Jonita S. Madlucaj on Excellence, Kevin Iwansky, Excellence, Juliana Pamisano for Honor, Alicia Zahenny, Distinction. So this charter status also goes towards the National Debate Association. So congratulations to all of our students and their continued work during the summer. We're very proud of their accomplishments. And I think in the next couple of weeks, everyone will be getting their schedules, and letters will go out to the elementary schools. So that's always exciting to receive, and that's all I have, Dr. Wool. I'm going to pass it over to you.
Wool, thank you. And I think we're all still reeling from the loss of Victoria, and I just want to thank the faculty, staff, students, and community for the way they rallied to the DeLeo family in the midst of tragedy. Sometimes I always look at this community, and I'm inspired by the love and support that I see, particularly kids to kids. It's just so powerful. And we hope soon that Ani and her mom and dad can find their way to some peace. Lots going on, as you mentioned. Let me start with the joyous thing. Tomorrow, we'll be graduating three kids who made up their missed credits in summer school, and they'll be having a special graduation ceremony, and we're very excited about that. I know Mr. Nickel will be there videotaping, so parents have a memento of that special occasion. But I want to thank Brian Segman and all the teachers in summer school, and Ms. Bukema, who's been checking on them regularly, and she's very excited, coordinated, a cake and all, so we're going to have a wonderful time tomorrow. So we're excited about that. Dr. Mulhall has been incredibly busy. Actually, she and Dr. Ladewig were teaching a course in action research this week, mobilizing some of the brilliant minds in this district to do some self-study. But I must say that one of the things that just makes me so proud is the extraordinary skill of the high school librarian. If you haven't met Catherine Johnson, you have no idea what you're missing. This is a woman that could absolutely run a college library, and the chapter and verse that she gave them on how to use digital resources yesterday was inspirational. So if you're listening, Catherine, we appreciate you. I also had a great deal of fun, and I'm still suffering from exhaustion, but I ran two courses this summer in teacher leadership, and Lisa assisted me, as did Jen Ronaldo and Jen Egan. The response from our teachers and their desire to do more, to have more of an effect, and the board was able to read some of their reflections, are just astounding. We have just such a dedicated faculty. It's one of the things that buoys me in what is a very challenging time. And let me transition to a couple of communications you're going to be getting soon, just to make you aware of them. So you'll be getting a letter probably from me and/or Mr. Galano. It's not that relevant, but it's going to update you on all of the things going on to upgrade our athletic facilities. Tim has been working on this all summer. Most are moving along swimmingly, but there will be some delays. The field was slated to be available in early September. Now it's more likely going to be early October. We ran into some significant rock, and we had to reroute some of the drainage systems. But we'll be letting you know. But the upgrades are going to be phenomenal. We're going to share with you all the things that are going on across the system around athletics. But you may or may not be aware, depending on what you're paying attention to, that the governor and the legislators passed recently a law that prohibits the use of Internet-enabled devices in all schools throughout the entire day. So I just want you to understand that means laptops, smartwatches, cell phones, your children may bring them to school, but they can't access them. And that means they can't access them during lunchtime, so you are not going to be able to contact your children if you need to during the day, and they're not going to be able to contact you. We will be sending you how we are trying to manage this decision. I've been really clear about my perception. I think it's a really good idea to encourage kids to keep their phones and the distractions at a minimum. This was a bridge too far. There was a way for us to implement these rules that still gave kids enough grace to use these phones in certain circumstances. I struggle with the idea, looking at my incredible high school students who are so responsible, who drive cars, who have jobs, who need to make calls sometimes or contact their family at lunchtime, to say, "No, 16-year-old, you cannot use your phone." I'm also concerned that it puts limitations on my ability to keep our children safe. But we're going to work around that because Dr. Ladewig and the policy committee and I have been puzzling through this, and we're going to share with you how we've tried to strike a balance between encouraging distraction-free schools, but still making sure kids, in a real emergency, would have the ability to get their phones, if we needed them to get their phones. So we're going to adhere to the letter of the law, as we always do, but we're also going to try to do this in a way that makes sense for what we need in terms of health and safety. And the last thing I want to say to you is, in my letter, I'm going to send you, because this is the way we behave in all things. We don't do what the crowd does. We do our homework, and I've spent two years curating meta-analyses and all kinds of studies. And just to say out loud, there's no evidence that supports what we're doing as being positive. It's just a response to a failure to educate kids effectively and implement rules with fidelity. We will fix that, but I want you, if you choose to, to look at the research for yourself and understand that our goal is to try to do what we authentically believe is in the best interest of children, their development, their self-regulation, their understanding of ethical behaviors and choices. And we're going to continue to do that. We're also going to send in that letter a set of tools that parents can access so that they have better capacity to manage the technology that their kids are engaging in. But we should all be realistic and understand that almost every high school now is digitally-based, whether it's the Google Classroom or some other platform. So this legislation would have prevented kids from bringing their own laptops to school, and it would have required districts to do that. We are allowing students to come with their personal laptops because you may or may not be aware that our networks prevent access to social media and inappropriate sites. I'm sure some kids are clever enough to do workarounds, but the environment here is designed to support positive use of technology. So you'll be getting a letter from me. It won't be as long as the speech, and there will be choices you can make if you want to know more. You can dig into the links that offer you tools. You can dig into the research that we've done as a district. But know that we always have at the center of our decision-making, what is authentically in the best interest of kids, not what is the popular stance of the moment, but what can we say is sound and what's going to help kids thrive? Those are always my objectives. And my primary concern in this day and age sadly is always safety. And you know, we have done, under Dr. Ladewig's leadership, incredible things to enhance the safety and well-being of our faculty, students, and staff, and technology is a big part of that. Many of our secondary students have on their phones right now an app that is called Safe to Speak Up. Why is that important? Well, the size of this campus is about six acres, and if you're a student, and you're a sixth grader, and you're standing on the other side of the bridge, and you need to contact somebody in an emergency, and you don't have your phone, you're going to have to scream for help. Safe to Speak Up is on their phone. They can push a button, and they're instantly in touch with every member of the safety team in this school. And you're asking me, by design and choice, to take that tool away from every secondary student. It breaks my heart because it doesn't help me do one of my primary tasks, but we're going to figure it out, I promise you. Lisa, Brian, Kim, and Maria Pace, and Larry Mastroda, and I met with the rising senior class officers, and we're asking those kids to help us figure out how to communicate this in a way to every grade level. So when Kim and Larry and Maria, Mrs. Bukema, Mrs. Pace, Mr. Mastroda are meeting with the ninth grade, they're going to have grade-level officers from the senior class talking to the kids so that our student body understands we understand why they're frustrated by this, and we're going to build a bridge to make it less frustrating. But I think it's going to be very powerful for them to hear from the senior class officers that they understand where we stand. We stand with them. I have a lot of faith in kids. I think the biggest mistake here is we start from the assumption that kids can't do something that they should be able to do. So, Madam Governor, I know you may have had the best of intentions, poor decision. All right. I mentioned graduation. I just want to give a brief update, if I can, on some of the facilities things that are going on. I mentioned what's going on at the high school with the field purchase as coming along slowly. We hope to have the parking lot back in usable condition before the opening of school and access to the playgrounds. Tim is working pretty much around the clock on that. I visited Parsons today. I am so excited about that renovation. I can't wait for the board to see it. Lisa, Brian, and I went over before dinner, and it actually has a lobby now. It is so exciting. And both of the lifts are in, so now a handicapped child can actually get to the art room, and they can get to the third floor. We have two full-size bathrooms on the third floor. And by the way, all of that work was done pretty much in-house by our team. Just extraordinary. We were over in the new office at Harrison Avenue School. It's fantastic. It flows beautifully. It's going to improve safety for everybody in the school. We are almost finished redesigning the phase classrooms over there. The space is much better. There's a separate room now for PT. This is really important and wonderful things for kids. We were on the third floor at Parsons today, and the rooms are actually furnished. There are books inside. Teachers have things up on the bulletin boards. The skylight is in, so lots of wonderful work. But I want to give a special shout-out to two people who went above and beyond. One of my favorite elements in our school district is the original bell tower at the Parsons Memorial School. If you've ever looked at it, it's absolutely beautiful. And you probably don't know this, but the bell is rung pretty regularly. It stopped ringing. We're about to fix that. But the other day, we were fixing a repair on, I think it was the chimney, right, Tim? And we had a giant lift there, and Eddie Radcliffe, who is one of our electricians, he knew that that bell tower had a light in it at one point, but he could never get into the bell tower. So he convinced the guys with the lift to get him into the bell tower. He brought up a whole bunch of materials that he had, and the next morning, he sent me a picture with the moon shining and the bell tower lit at the Parsons Memorial School.
I love that.
And my point is, nobody asked him to do this. He did it because he takes pride in his work, and we see that everywhere. And now it's a little bit contagious. There's an old clock on the Parsons Memorial School on the Halsted Avenue side, and Dan Morabito, who's the head custodian there, is now working feverishly with Kevin Garvey to get that light fixed, and we're now going to have a lit bell tower and a lit clock on a building that was built in 1890. And the reason I like that story is, nobody asked them to do it. So I want to just say, I couldn't be more grateful for the kind of work that our maintenance and custodial staff does in the summer. It's Herculean. All right, I'm going to shut up now, and we have other things to do. We have a public hearing and all of that stuff.
Okay, so just to quickly explain, I'm going to be closing our business meeting and opening a public hearing to discuss the district's safety plan, and at that time, Dr. Wool and Dr. Ladewig will go into a bit more depth about what's happening. So do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing to discuss the Harrison Central School District 2025-26 safety plan?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, I'm going to pass it back over to
First of all, I just mentioned what a great job Brian does in supervising and organizing everything related to safety in our district, and we have systems that are so highly refined. And this is really the result of his oversight and his innovation. And he recently had, as he's required to, his annual meeting with our safety committee, and he's going to narrate who those people were and what exactly we accomplished. So thanks. Yeah, anywhere you want.
Thanks, Annie. Well, thanks, Dr. Wool, and to the Board of Education. So every summer, we gather our district safety team, and that really is represented by every member of our school community. We have our administrators. We have every bargaining group represented. We have Board of Education, our Board of Education, Samantha Jaberger, our trustee, was there as a part of that work, and the focus of that, and members of the Harrison Police Department. And the focus of that work is to really reflect on the year that we've had and to think about the experiences that we've had relative to the drills that we conduct and the initiatives that we have underway, and also to plan for the year ahead. And part of that work involves looking at and updating our district's safety plan. And I should just mention, for those that aren't aware, we have a district's safety plan that's publicly available that was shared with our community a few weeks ago by email. It's also available on our district website. That's a public document. It speaks to the protocols that we follow and many of the details that are important to our approach to handling emergency situations, but it's a public document, so it doesn't include floor plans, it doesn't include site-specific details. Then each school also produces a detailed safety plan. Those school-specific safety plans are confidential because of the protected information that they have, and when you're planning for safety, you need to keep some of those details confidential. But they're in process being updated and will be done by next week, and we also submit those to the State Education Department by September as well. So the work of this evening, the board will, upon the superintendent's recommendation, act on a resolution to adopt the district-wide safety plan. But I just want to also give a little context to the way we try to think about planning for safety in the district. This is very top of mind for every member of our school community. We really focus on trying to think about this in terms of infrastructure readiness and human readiness, and each of them is equally important, and you can't really think about safety without thinking about each of those complementing each other. So just to provide a couple of updates on the infrastructure readiness. So as the community knows, we've been at work with our bond improvements, enhancing our schools, building new instructional spaces, but what's also happening there is that we're hardening the exterior of our buildings, and we're building what we call mantraps, which is a way of securely greeting visitors to the school before they enter the school. That's an essential feature in best practice to try to manage and mitigate against risk. We're also adding a number of security cameras, both interior and exterior. We actually have just almost 300 cameras in our district that put eyes on just about every corner so that we can be aware of what we need to know in an emergency. We've also updated our door controls, so every exterior door has a door control system, and it now will produce alerts if a door is left ajar, because when a door is left ajar, obviously, the perimeter of the school is not secure. We've also recently implemented what are called critical floor plans or strategic floor plans that provide for better information in a time-sensitive way to not only the Harrison Police Department, but 911 operators, county police, and state police, and they will produce a significant benefit to us when we have to respond to an emergency because it identifies exactly how to enter each school, if you're not familiar with the campus and you're a first responder, as well as where all the critical assets are within each building to keep everybody there safe. So those are just a few of the enhancements that we've made from an infrastructure standpoint, but it's an ongoing process because as we get smarter, as we learn more, and unfortunately, as we learn from some of the tragedies that we read about in the public, you know, we're very attentive to that. In terms of human readiness, it's all about training. But the first thing that we're really conscientious about with our staff is that safety is no single person's responsibility. You know, we're so blessed and grateful to have SROs in each of our six schools, and I'll say more about our partnership with HPD in just a moment, but it can lull people into a false sense of security, knowing that there's a police officer there, and what we're at pains to always remind every employee is, it is every single employee's responsibility to keep everyone safe. So we've empowered every employee, for example, with technology to be able to lock down a school. Every employee has the ability to do that, so if they see an emergency or something that presents an imminent credible danger, they have the ability to lock down the school. We do over 12 drills in each school every year where we're planning for different kinds of emergencies, and we're trialing different things. This coming fall, we're going to be rolling out a new initiative that we'll share more information about where we're going to practice a reunification event, where if we have to reunify kids with their parents, how do we do that? We'll be doing something during our getaway day, right before Thanksgiving break, to practice that. We provide that Safe to Speak Up app to students so that they can communicate with us in an emergency. We've got a little work to do now to figure out how they'll use that tool, given the recent legislation. And the Crisis Go app for parents, which parents will share more information with them again, just to remind them about the use of that app, but we're using that in emergencies to communicate in a timely way with families so that they have reliable and credible information. We're also training our staff. In a couple of weeks, we have 70 members of our faculty and staff who are going to receive CPR and AED certification. New York State just passed a law a couple of weeks ago saying that school districts have to have cardiac emergency response plans. We already have, actually, the framework of that plan, and we already have the training in place. We already have the AEDs in place, but we'll review that legislation to see how we have to update our plans further to fully comply with that. But training people is the first step, right? We'll have now 70 more people in our school community, and that's every administrator and members of every safety team from each of our six schools who will be trained in CPR and AED as well. And that, it's just being prepared. You have to be prepared for these emergencies and plan for all these contingencies. And I can't speak enough about the partnership with the Harrison Police Department. They have been essential partners to us throughout. We meet with them regularly. They suggest security enhancements to us. We review them. Several of them, we've implemented within our schools because of their wise counsel. But we've recently enhanced a communication tool that But we've recently enhanced a communication tool that they're going to have access to, whereby in an emergency, they'll be able to push these dynamic floor plans out to every police officer, which includes camera access in certain places within our school. So if there is a real emergency, dispatch, Harrison Police Department, county police, and state police will have instant access to the information that they need because in a real emergency, seconds and minutes is what makes all the difference. So we can't say enough about that partnership. They have been indispensable partners to us in the way we think about safety, in the way we think about educating our community and our students. And we really couldn't do this work without them. And we're really proud of that partnership. We know that doesn't exist in every school community. But we're really proud of the fact that we've nurtured that relationship, and they've come toward us and said, "We're here to help. These are our kids. They're a part of our community," which is why we're so fortunate to have an SRO in each school. So, sorry for the lengthy update. Just wanted to bring you up to speed on the work that we're doing behind the scenes. But we take the safety of the kids of this community as our very top priority, and we're always planning for how we can do that job.
Yeah. And we couldn't have anybody more thoughtful or devoted to getting it right. So thank you. I mean it. And just a shout-out to Kevin Wong, Lieutenant Kevin Wong, and Captain Bill Kirau, who, they're not in the buildings, but boy, they are essential members of this team. And we, as Brian pointed out, we couldn't do it without them.
Thank you, Brian, for the very detail-oriented description of our safety plan. Okay. At this time, do I have a motion to close the public hearing to discuss the Harrison Central Schools District Safety Plan?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to reopen the business meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to the personnel report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects, seeing none. A, certificated personnel. One, rescind appointment. Two, resignation. Three, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Four, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Five, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. Six, leave of absence. Seven, change of status. B, non-certificated personnel. One, resignation. Two, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Three, regular appointment, SED clearance admitted. Four, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Five, reinstatement. Six, change of status. C, other. One, contracted service provider. Two, student intern, SED clearance received. Three, Medicare reimbursement. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects, seeing none. A, approval of Harrison High School debate team, 11th and 12th graders, field trip to Addison, Texas for a debate tournament. B, approval of Harrison High School debate team, 10th through 12th graders, field trip to New Haven, Connecticut for a debate tournament. C, approval of Harrison High School Girls varsity cheerleading field trip to Beach Lake, Pennsylvania to attend cheerleading camp. D, adoption of revised policies, second reading. E, adoption of revised policy, single reading. F, approval of the Harrison Central School District's safety plan for the 2025 school year. G, approval of the Harrison Central School District Code of Conduct for the 2025-26 school year. H, approval of memorandum of agreement. I, appointment of impartial hearing officer. J, approval of CSE CPSC minutes. K, approval of CSE CPSC recommendations. L, approval of CSE CPSE annual reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the finance and facilities, I will take on consent unless anyone objects, seeing none. A, treasurer's report, June 2025. B, treasurer's report, July 2025. C, quarterly report for the extra classroom activity funds. D, 2024-25 appropriation transfers. E, 2025-26 appropriation transfers. F, contract for educational services, Devro Foundation, DBA, Devro Behavioral Health. G, approval of change of orders, window replacement, Parsons Memorial Elementary School. H, approval of change order, window replacement, Parsons Memorial Elementary School. I, approval of change order, baseball field, Harrison High School. J, disposal of equipment. K, approval of contract with Musical Theater International, Les Mis, School Edition. L, approval of contract with Musical Theater International, James and the Giant Peach, Jr. M, approval of contract with Jonathan Dorff, author, We Could Be Heroes. N, contract award, RFB number 25/26-11 asset recovery. O, rescind an award contract, RFB number 25/26-06 elevator maintenance and service. Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place on August 27 at 8:30 a.m. here at the Lewis M. Klein Middle School. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a wonderful night. We are adjourned.